Okay. We will go ahead and start. Call the work session to order for the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly Work Session in the Assembly Chambers on Thursday, September 14, 2023 at 8:36 PM. I'm just making a note here, 36. First item on here is Citizens' Comments. And the local number is 907-486-3231. And the toll-free number is 1-855-492-9202. Anybody wishing to call in or speak at the meeting here, please do so at this time. I'll give it just a bit here. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the agenda items. First one is discuss amending Kodiak Island Borough Code 2.30.080B to establish time limits on debate. No, I look to you for report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Assembly. This was actually requested by Assembly Member James Turner. However, he's not here. And so what he's wanting to do, currently, Roberts Rules of Order govern all proceedings of the Assembly. The debate rule stated in the Roberts Rules of Order is that each member has the right to speak twice on a question, no longer than 10 minutes each time. Assembly Member Turner requests that KIB Section 2.30.080 be amended to limit the speeches from 10 minutes to five minutes. So I have a copy of the code in the packet and the proposed new language for you to discuss. Thank you.
Okay. So I open it up for discussion. I'm gonna take Scott first and then Ryan.
Age before beauty, huh? I'm in favor of not supporting this. I don't think we have a, I don't think we have a problem with people being overly loquacious on this assembly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
I feel personally attacked. That's all.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to say anything? Larry?
The only thing I would say is, I don't think there's enough discussion on the issues. I think it's really good for the public to hear from Assembly Members on their points of view, why they vote, how they vote. And I think as we discuss things, it confirms, well, it sends a message to the public that we are actually acting as a thoughtful body looking at the issues instead of coming with predetermined decisions on what we're going to do or not do. So I think the more we discuss issues, the more we remain flexible, the more we can project to the public that we are listening and looking at all points of view. So I don't support reducing that.
Joe?
I think I agree with that as well. I don't recollect too many times that somebody has gone up to the 10-minute mark. But I agree also that the more the public can hear us expound on our positions, then the better it is they understand how we came to the decisions that we've come to.
Jared?
Yeah, I agree. I don't necessarily see a need for the change, but I think that also put undue burden on whoever's keeping time for people talking. Now, there's, five minutes is a whole lot different than 10. I don't see the need for it.
Yeah. I don't see that we've had a problem. Might be different at some time in the future, but at this time, I have not seen a problem in the last four years. So I agree with not changing it. So next item is review and discuss the proposed citizens' comment form. Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Assembly Member Ladue requested we revisit having a citizens' comment form. It's something the borough used to do. It is a way for people to offer commentary on how the borough is doing. So the borough clerk found the latest version. I did some updates to the graphics and took away the ability to fax in your complaint. And so you have it in front of you. It has the bear eating a fish on the front, or at least holding the fish. The way that it was set up in the past is it allowed community members to either make a complaint, to call for request of action, or commend the actions of a borough employee. And then it gave their, a place for their contact information. And then there's also a definition for the three different things, so you can mark one if you find that to be necessary, and it has some language in there about the Kodiak Island Borough wants to provide the highest level of services to our citizens. So that's the actual form. Larry also wanted to discuss having an ordinance or something that made it so that citizen comment form just didn't disappear at the whim of someone walking by. I talked to the folks on the Kenai Peninsula Borough. The Borough, the only kind of complaint forum they have is an ADA grievance forum that's available online. I talked to Michelle at the City of Kodiak. They also don't have a formal process. Neither does the City of Homer. And then the City and Borough of Sika only have an administrative appeal for parking citations. So the one that did have an online tool is the Municipality of Anchorage. On this second part that you will have found, the Anchorage works, if you're older, it says number side, AKA NC works, and if you're younger, it's a hashtag, depending on your age bracket. The list in blue there on the front page are all the forms that Anchorage has available online. And so they, you know, there's some different powers involved here, but I do like this online thing, letting people have a different way into the borough. And I think that that would be a way that we could stay more relevant as our age brackets change. I looked into what the school district is doing. On the back there, you'll see the wording that they do, the complaints concerning the schools, or complaints concerning school personnel. And then I included the actual form they use if you have a complaint against someone who works at the school. And then on the final page, there is a complaint, and I don't, I'm not hoping that anyone uses this, I think it's kind of funny now that this is the one I chose, but the state has a lot. The State Department of Health and Social Services have one, the Department of Education has one, the Alaska Public Offices Commission has one, and it's just your normal black and white, standard bubble form. So there's a lot of different ways we can do it. This tri-fold method is what we have done in the past. There's room out front that we could, they could be sitting right outside the clerk's office. It's set up so that all complaints go to me, so they, if they were turned to the clerk officer or me directly, they would hopefully eventually end up with, to me, and then we try to take care of them. I do think that we would like to, I'm already looking at adding a frequently answered questions part to our website, so this is something that we could add as well. And it could even be like a link off of that frequently answered questions as well, just like, how do I complain about something, or how do I let it be known that I want the borough to do something or look at something? So I think that we were in a, we're in a very good spot because we're looking at doing a website redesign right now, that we could add that information in and just have it more easily assessed by people who are looking for it.
Questions? Scott?
I think having this form, the tri-fold form, on your website for downloading and printing on people's own printers is a really good idea. And I thought this came out really good, so.
Any other comments? Larry?
Well, I'm very pleased with the tri-fold. I think that we have great people working, well, my experience is with the school district, I would say that's true, in the borough, who are trying to do a good job. We're a bureaucracy. And to a citizen who's trying to work through the rules and regulations and policies and operating procedures, you can feel pretty small. And it's, you don't always understand why something is happening the way it is. And anything that we could do to facilitate communication as to why rules are as they are and deadlines, and to give people a voice to share their thoughts when they're frustrated in some kind of forum is a good thing and strengthens government. And I think that if any manager is aware that somebody is rather upset at them for some reason, they would like to know that so that they could ameliorate some of the concerns, you know, through open dialogue. I like this because it provides a place for commendation, a complaint, a request for action. So it also is collecting new ideas in different ways to do anything, and to a certain extent, it minds the wisdom of our entire community if it's used well. I would recommend that we put, and I'm not sure what it's called, but at the post office, who is in competition with others or doing a good job, so I always fill in their form, but they have one of those little things that you take a picture of?
QR code.
A QR code. It might be good to put a QR code on this thing. And the only concern that I had with an ordinance is that we used to have a complaint form, and a manager on their own decided not to do it anymore and got rid of it. And that's sort of a break of trust. I don't know who it was, so I'm not referring to anybody. And I'm glad this would be coming back, but I think the public has the right to expect this kind of thing, and just an ordinance saying there will be a complaint, commendation, or request for action form available for the public, so it doesn't become so ambiguous.
Ryan, did you have your hand up?
I was just fascinated that you knew it was a QR code. I think that that's a wonderful idea, and there are a tremendous amount of people that use the QR code and that technology, so absolutely support that. I also think that this tri-fold looks amazing, but feels expensive. So I like the idea of it being available online. So I don't know, I think with, with what Mr. Ladue is saying, I feel like that is the right approach because currently, there's nothing that enforces this. So I like Mr. Ladue's approach to this as well. Thanks.
Jared?
Yeah, thanks for putting this together. There are a lot of capital letters on here, but I like the color scheme. It's really cool. And what I'd be really interested in seeing like a year from now is, you know, how, how, how these are tracked, you know, how many comments we get in, and how many come through the website, and actually, how many do people actually fill this out and submit it? Which, that'd be really kind of interesting to see, if you, if you develop something like that. But, no, that's cool.
Joe? Do you have any comments?
Not much more to add. I like it as well, but in addition to Jared's comments, I think it would be nice to see how many people use these, but also the way that things were taken care of, how they were resolved in the end would be another good one to hear.
Well, that's why Amy's, Amy's proposed a good method. They go to her, and then that information comes back to, to us through her. I'm in, I like the, I like the form. I am not in favor of the ordinance to create more bureaucracy because I'm just not. I think that, let's see how this works. On it, before we look at adding any bureaucracy. Amy, you had your question?
Well, I was just gonna comment that I like the way that the clerk is tracking the yellow sheets that you guys do, and you have a, kind of a summary of what's been put in and when they're gonna go on to a work session or regular meeting, and then what has happened. And so my intent was to kind of offer something like that, just so, but just so you know, right now, like, we get complaints every day, like, a lot. And so that is not something that I regularly bring to you unless there's a problem that I can't fix. But if you want me to specifically track these, we can, just for the fun of this form. I'm not against having an ordinance. I just, I would just want to know, are you gonna, are you gonna put that together? Or is that something that you're, you want staff to do?
Larry?
There is bureaucracy that complicates the lives of our citizens, and there's bureaucracy that protects our citizens and invites them to be involved. I would be happy to put together a possible ordinance that would basically just say that there will be a protocol in place, you know, for citizens to commend, criticize, or file a complaint, and be a part of governance. So I don't see it as increasing bureaucracy.
True bureaucrat. I think we've taken care of that, so you'll work on that, Larry. Next item is discuss a Merrill letter to the Alaska delegation pertaining to the former mental health clinic buildings. This is a result, this came out as a result of the joint meeting between Amy and myself and Sullivan's staff, and they're suggesting that this have the mayor's signature on it rather than the manager's signature. So Amy, I'll let you fill in from there since you had the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In our continued quest to either get the deed restrictions taken away or further define the deed restriction for the mental health buildings, we've enlisted the help of Sebastian O'Kelly, which, who is our federal lobbyist, for those of you who don't know. He helped with the creation of the letter to send to the Alaska delegation in Washington as a whole. Senator Sullivan's staff recommended that it would be stronger going to the Bureau of Indian Affairs or the Department of the Interior if it had all three signatures on it instead of just Senator Sullivan. So Senator Murkowski's staff was already aware of that because that was our initial ask, but after Senator Sullivan and Senator Murkowski were here and actually toured Ocean Beauty Icicle, the topic of housing came up. So Senator Sullivan's staff responded to that when Sebastian asked them. So this is the letter that he has wrote. I changed a couple of words, and that's all. And if it's approved, if you guys will okay the mayor's signing, we'll put the mayor letter head on there, and then he's actually requested that we snail mail the original. So, little old school. So we are looking for just a consensus if it's okay for the mayor to sign that letter.
So question is, do you want it on the agenda next week, or do you wish to do that now? What's your wishes? Scott?
My only concern is there's no statement that these buildings were originally part of the school. And that's down in the last paragraph, it said that the deed restriction must be used for school or other public purposes only. I think by saying something about their previous life as part of the district school, what was it called? Regional school?
It was Kodiak, Alaska.
If we include that in the letter, that'll make it more clear.
Larry?
Just so I understand the process, when I was on the lands committee, we talked to the Coast Guard about freeing up Coast Guard land, and they said that could happen through act of Congress. The Coast Guard has to declare its surplus, and if they do, then it reverts to the Department of the Interior. And as part of their protocol, it has to be first offered to Alaska Native corporations and tribes who have first right of refusal. So this process, if the borough was looking at leasing or selling it, may not go the way that they want.
We're not actually looking to lease or, lease, yes, but not sell. And we're asking for them to agree with the definition that using it for housing to support our main revenue stream would be in the public's best interest. So we're not asking them to get rid of the deed restriction, we're asking them to agree with our definition of what the best public interest is.
So we would still retain ownership of the whole neighborhood?
Correct. It's always been the intent.
We retain the ownership of the building, the land. The questions that Senator Sullivan's staff had were, are there people in the community who don't want it to happen? Are there other people in the community who also showed interest in the land? And was the Assembly behind it? So we explained the process of how we got to where we were, and they were really happy that the Assembly had already voted that that was something they wanted. And they were also happy to hear, well, not happy to hear, but that there was not a lot of people who had the resources to bring that up to code and make it into something, since Ocean Beauty Icicle is the only one that at that time had the monetary backing to get where they needed it to be, then it made the decision for them simpler.
Thank you. Any other questions? So basically, is there a consensus for me to sign that now? Okay, looking around, I'm seeing heads bobbing. Yes, consensus is given. Thank you. Next item is discussion of the Kodiak Island Borough Compensation Study. Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kodiak Island Borough hired the company, called Gallagher, to conduct a compensation study. As you remember, we went back and forth between a couple of different companies, and then we didn't, we voted to not do it, and then we had a special meeting, and then we voted to not do it again. But because those two meetings weren't back-to-back, we could vote on it a third time. We did. We decided to do this compensation study, and the total investment was expected to be $41,000. At this point, we have exercised all of the options except there's a job, kind of a job definition option that would cost us $7,500 that we've yet to do. So right now, we're at that $33,000 level. So this is the PowerPoint that they gave us as their final presentation, and they wanted me to sign on to the payment. But I went back to the RFP, and I looked at what the deliverables were and what we were supposed to get, and I just thought, man, this $33,000 for this, there has to be more to this. So they have, in the RFP, and I think they're listed in here, it's on page three, that they were gonna conduct the analysis, which they absolutely have. that they were going to conduct the analysis, which they absolutely have. But then it says they're going to assist us in administering and adjusting compensation of employees in identified positions and then provide recommendations on a transition and implementation plan. Those two things haven't been done. And then we chose not to reclassify our jobs. So the decision bands method that the borough uses for compensation of employees doesn't have a lot of bands. And so we have to kind of squish a bunch of different jobs into bands. And so for instance, in IT department, our GIS analysis and our network analysis are in the same band, but their jobs are vastly different. But because they're in the same band, their job descriptions are very similar, even though they do very different things. And so because of the methodology that we use, some of our jobs are kind of squished into where they necessarily maybe should not be. The $7,500 option is a little further description of those jobs and kind of breaking those out a little bit more. And they're telling me there's a better way than the decision band method, but they wouldn't tell me on the phone and they wouldn't tell me in an email. They want to meet with me on Tuesday at 1:30. So Tuesday at 1:30, I have a meeting with them in which we'll further look at those options. I'd like the assembly to kind of know what those are before we go any further because I don't want to invest any more money if we're not going to get a better product than this. So I'll just walk you real fast. If you have questions, please let me know. Our brains are not exactly fresh at this point. So here we go. Page four is why they're a great company. I don't think we need to do that. Page five, they are doing, comparing our salaries to a couple of different markets. We specifically asked them to compare to municipalities throughout Alaska so that we could compare to other government jobs. They also applied to nonprofits and compared it to for profit, I can't speak for profits, up and down the West Coast. Page six is the list of municipalities that participated in the custom survey information. Page seven tells you that there are three different ways we're going to look at data. One is the custom survey. That's the communities listed on page six. And the published survey data, that is looking at a company called CompData, the Economic Research Institute, and AML's annual survey that they do as well because that was all published. And then number three, which is coming up in a couple of pages here, is a combination of those. So pages eight and nine are these wonderful graphs that show how we are doing. And according to the combined one, it shows you that P50 would be the median range for those salaries. At the 25% mark, we're 6% ahead. At the 50%, the median, we're 4% behind. And at the 75%, we are 13% behind. And then we have the same graph for the custom survey where we compared it to the Alaska municipalities, where you can see we're behind at 7, 10, and 9% across those same metrics. So what this doesn't do a great job telling us is how long our different employees have been in the job. So when we look at an employee and they are behind at the 50, it doesn't really mean that they're underpaid because they could have only been in that job for under six months. And so that's kind of explained a little bit on page 13, but that's one of the flaws in this kind of system. On page 10, there is this handy Excel spreadsheet, which is my favorite. It gives you the summary of the custom survey, the published, and then the full market, which is compared. Those boxes that are gold are the ones that are, what they call significantly misaligned. On page 11, they tell you how they came up with significantly misaligned and it gives you the color codes. The only one they actually put on that graph is the gold one because that's the ones we were concerned about fixing. They said that we were highly competitive if we were right around 5% within that 50% median. And then it lists out the rest and I won't read that all to you, but if you have questions, please let me know. On page 12, there are five positions listed in which they suggested we would look at. Those were five that came up as not being where they should be, that they were potentially misaligned. And that is our GIS analysis, who's Travis, our IT supervisor, Paul. This position is actually being eliminated over the next couple of months as we hire an IT director. And we just did a reclassification for that job, so that won't apply to that job anymore. Our network analysis, who is Mitchell, our project assistant, who is Patricia in engineering facilities. And we have one secretary three right now and that's Brian in engineering facilities as well. So those are the four positions after we take Paul's out that we might want to look at. Because we didn't do a reclassification study, if we wanted to reclassify those jobs, it's about $500 a position. So it would be $2,000 investment to reclassify those jobs and get those in closer to where the market is. You'll also see that they made a possible adjustment recommendation to the overall salary structure by 3% to 5%. You are all very aware that we did just raise it two and a half. Plus, over the course of the year, if there is a positive evaluation, most employees, unless they're at the top of their scale, will be eligible for another 2.5%. And we also, through the union contract, have changed the way we pay out longevity. So more people are eligible for longevity pay. So that will get us into sight of that scale. I think the most important recommendation is that, which is on page 14, is that the salary structure should be looked at every three to five years. This isn't something that we can just wait. The last time we did this was 2013, 2014. So when we wait 10 years, we're not evaluating it as often as we should. I would like to figure out how to do this so it doesn't cost $33,000. But I think if we pay more attention to it, we wouldn't have to do that full look every year. And then what they suggest on their next steps on page 15 is kind of what I'm going to do with them. They, we met with them. They told us about these findings. They gave us some time to digest it. I had department heads look at this and ask any questions that they might have. I am willing to pay them at the level that we're at right now, but I need much more information before we would go on to that next step. They're also going to teach me about the payment methods that are not the decision band method. And so I'm excited to learn about that. And so I will bring our HR representative and our finance director, if she's available to that meeting on Tuesday, just so we can all learn about that stuff. So overall, they had very favorable things to say about the borough that we were competitive with our pay. But in those particular four positions in the future, we are misaligned.
Amy, a question for you. I'm not sure when the snapshot is. You know, for instance, projects assistant Patricia just recently went into that position. And so she's new and there's increases there. The GIS guy is new on there. And the IT supervisor, you're changing that position to a director?
All four positions that are there are newer employees that have been in their job probably under a year. So they would be, we would more be comparing them to that 25% mark instead of the 50% mark. And so if we were to reclassify those, it's not something that probably has to be done immediately.
Okay. The, I appreciate you holding us at $33,000. I'm not, I'm not very impressed with this at all.
The RFP that we agreed to fund had just one line item that said compensation study analysis, $25,000. And so that, in the future, if we did this again, I would like a, more of a breakdown on how many hours of work that was and, you know, just have a little more control of what the output is. But I don't, I will not go any further in that contract until I find out what that other option is and if that's a worthwhile investment for the borough.
I appreciate that. Scott?
I think that doing a review more frequently than 10 years is a really good idea, especially with some of those categories that are in gold that you see. On the other hand, on this chart, they show you virtually every community in Alaska that would have enough government to count there under local public sector organizations. Is there some way that we can work with AML to try to deal with this? And get everybody in on the same thing of doing a survey study?
AML does do an annual survey, but because every municipality is different. So if I just asked AML, like what do the finance directors make across Alaska? I would guess that our other finance directors across Alaska are also not running the IT department and also not in charge of all of our investments. So our finance director not only runs all the investments for the borough, but also for the school district. So her duties and her, what she does is quite, you know, might be different than the rest. So yes, there is valuable information that we can get from AML and we did look at that. As a matter of fact, when I was up there, I was like, let's just use AML's. Why spend any money at all? Because that's the easy button answer. But the reality is, is that because everyone is so unique that it's worth. Our members actually fill out a form called a PDQ and it's their, the qualifications or the description of their job and then their supervisor looks at it when we reclassify. So when we were going to make the IT director classification, Paul wrote down all the stuff that he is responsible for and then Dora came in and wrote down all the stuff she was responsible for of her IT department. And then that combination got set off to make the new one. So it's a, it's a very specific to Kodiak Island Borough process.
The, the five positions that they talk about at the end here, they're mostly IT type issues. And I know that the price on those has gone through the roof in the, in the past 10 years for sure. Aren't there other areas that we're way behind on too?
So out of those four positions, two are in the IT department or GIS as well. And then the other two are actually in engineering facilities. So, and the last time we did a compensation study, our secretary threes came out as being underpaid. And the projects assistant, the job that Patricia is in was created for Patricia. And so that's, we have no baseline off of that to judge how that would go. But when they, when she filled out the PDQ and they, they have all of that because they classified these jobs initially. And so when they compare those duties with what other people are doing around Alaska or along the West Coast, then that's how they came up with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Jared?
Yeah, I'm not too impressed with the report either. I've seen salary studies done through the, through UAA and, or maybe it's just me, I like data. I just like information and I want to see how they get to their results. On the, on page seven, when it says that they, about the surveys, the published surveys, these are organizations that they sent custom surveys to. But if I recall from a lot of your updates, they had problems getting surveys, responses back. So is this the responses they got?
That was the custom survey stuff, just the Alaska public sector jobs. And so that list is the stuff that they, so.
That they actually received?
Right. So they did not get a lot and that was that delay in having the answers back. They had to go out and get more Alaska responses back. But the published data, that's the CompData, the Economic Research Institute, and then they use AML's as well.
Sure. Yeah, I, I find it somewhat helpful, but I want to see their data set. I want to see, I would, for, for $25,000, I, we should get everything, I think. But still useful, very useful. And yes, we should absolutely do it every three to five years or find a way to, find a way to do it so we can keep up with it. But thanks for meeting with them and interpreting this for us.
James?
I'll, I'll keep it simple. My comments when we decided to do this are on, on record. So you should probably go back and look at what my comments were. Other than that, I'll stand by the assembly's decision to do this and we see the results.
Yeah, thank you. Larry, more time?
I wasn't on the assembly at the time who approved this contract, but I can assure you, I probably feel as Mr. Turner did. Both then and now.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to the packet review. First item is contract number FY 2024-13, approval of a one-year contract with Matson Navigational Company of Alaska for metals processing and hauling. Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our engineering facilities director has been patiently waiting to get to this item. So Dave?
Yes, good evening and thank you. This is an annual renewal for basically our recycling, our scrap metal that we collect at the landfill, both non-ferris and ferris, majority of which is ferris material. There is an increase from this previous contract from $3.90 to $4.13. It consistently increases about the same amount every year. And if you dive into the contract, it basically explains it's mostly road fuel and taxes what is, or fuel and taxes what this is. So it's a fuel surcharge that drives this up. The one question that was, came from our consultant consulting with the attorney, excuse me, was some clarification language between container and load. And Matson came back and explained that this is, they use both terms interchangeably. The only issue that we've had with this contract as of late is not the fact that we are looking at not having to be able to meet the 15 vans. It's been actually getting the open top vans to allow us. So I don't think we have a threat here, but if they can't provide the vans, they can't hold us to that 15 van minimum. But we've never had this issue before. Or it hasn't been an issue in the past.
Yeah, it looks like we're exceeding that.
We have.
Okay. James?
Christopher is who you're dealing with every time?
It changes, quite frankly.
But this, this year it's Christopher?
Yes.
Okay. All right, never mind.
Any further discussion? Ryan?
I would be interested to know if you would like to get together and go over some of the contractual issues rather than illustrating them out at this work session.
That'd be fine if you feel the need for that. This has been a standard contract in the past. It has been reviewed by the attorney.
Yeah, one of my biggest concerns though is any type of sole sourcing, any type of renewal contract, extended renewal contract that removes free competition that perhaps others have been getting ready for or anticipating. So I'm pretty cautious when looking at renewals and sole source type mechanisms.
My comment would be is if the manager directs me to do that, then I would be happy to accommodate.
Okay. Further discussion or questions? Seeing none, we'll move on. Next item is approval, approval of the October 3, 2023, regular municipal election officials. Nova?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the assembly. The code requires that you appoint at least three election workers, officials in each of the precincts. So I have a list before you and I would like to thank all those who volunteered. I think I have more than 40 people that are on the list. And they already spent a couple of hours this week training. And also I know that they're going to have a long day on election days. They start at 6:00 AM and they sometimes go until 10:00 PM. So I would like to sincerely thank them for their commitment. And also I am beyond excited to share with you that we have a couple of kids that signed up to the Youth Ambassador Program. So we're going to have a couple of kids working at the bedside fire hall precinct. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any further, Joe?
I don't have any questions. I see a lot of people's names on here that I recognize and it's good to see them getting involved in the elections. I know that putting on elections is hard and I'm, I'm just happy to see so many people that are willing to put themselves out like this. So thank you to them all.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead and move on. Next item is managers' comments. Amy?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Assembly. Yesterday, Paul Van Dyke put in his resignation letter after serving for over 30 years at the borough. His last day is going to be September 27. Paul is our IT supervisor and we have had two applications in for our new IT director job that are both locals, that both have over 20 years. that are both locals, that both have over 20 years of experience. And so, we're very excited. We're going to start interviewing for that position next week. And Paul has agreed to be in on the interview process just so we know what questions to ask. We already discussed the mental health billings tonight. A reminder, our state lobbyist, Mark Hickey, is going to be here on October 26th to talk about our CIP lists. I actually made contact with Robert Green from the Pacific Spaceport Complex. They are awaiting the arrival of a new CEO. He plans on bringing the new CEO to introduce him to us when they come and speak to the Assembly. And he said I should have a date or a timeframe sometime next week. KEDC, the Kodiak Economic Development Corporation, actually re-invited me to be back on that board as an ex-officio representing the Borough. I went to that meeting to find out what they were doing. They are working on a community land trust and a store improvement project for downtown that will be grants. They hired an interim executive director and a new associate director. So, got to talk with them about what their goals were for the organization. At that meeting, the superintendent of schools was there and in the parking lot afterwards, she let me know that Karlik did get their 10 students. And so, the school board will be voting on Monday whether or not to open up that school. I attended the 9/11 ceremony at Bayside Fire Department. There was also a dedication of their new fast-response brush fire truck. It was on the front page of the paper. You probably saw that if you were paying attention to the paper. The fire chief has been in the paper himself and this week he was the guest speaker at Rotary. So, he is getting to know the community, which is great to see. This morning, I attended the Kodiak Fisheries Development Association meeting. It only happens once a year. So, happy to meet those folks and thank them for what they were doing for our community. I started looking this week at service district contracts. The service district contracts, the last time they were, their contracts from 2015, the last time they were updated was 2020. Actually, one of them, the last time it was updated, like the bid sheet part was 2018. So, I have Dave reaching out to our contractors to ensure that they are willing to commit to snow removal over the winter because as I look at these, I don't, I don't want to break snow removal as we're looking at them. So, we're getting commitments to remove snow over. But I would like to take a look at how those are administered and treat those like we would any other contract here at the Borough. So, just started looking at that and it was just because my own, you know, home service district came across my desk and I was like, oh, what did we spend $67,000 on? And then, oh, how does that contract work? And then, question, question, question. So, starting to take a look at those, probably end up starting with that one just because that's where I started asking all the questions. And then, we will move on to the other ones as time allows. Prince William Sound Regional Citizens Advisory Council had a pre-board meeting this week. I attended that. We have an upcoming Board of Directors meeting in Homer next Thursday and Friday that I will be attending off-island. Then you can see my upcoming travel dates there. In Engineering and Facilities, we are working hard to finalize the amendment for Alaska Waste. As you can imagine, the changes that we want to make are not necessarily the changes Alaska Waste wants to make. So, we're kind of negotiating and ending up in the middle. We have that coming to you at the work session on September 28th. So, we will have negotiated and be done by then. We are looking at changing definitions. We've had public comment here at Assembly meetings where members of the community have come in and said, we cannot find resolution. I think that we are going to be able to find resolution once those definitions are better defined. And Alaska Waste is on board with changing the definitions and making it clearer. We do have some, they want to change how much... Right now, we have a very complicated formula on how we determine how much they get paid for their fuel costs. As we all have seen, fuel costs over the last year have been up and down, up and down, mostly up. And so, we are working on figuring that out. At the landfill, the Volvo excavator has been completely taken off of line and we are renting a replacement from Brecken until we get that fixed. We have a new excavator coming. We're supposed to get it late October, early November. This week, we had the ADC onsite inspection. And even though we're not in finance, we also have our auditors here this week. So, lots of inspecting this week. At the KFRC, the Government Services Administration, the GSA contract came back positive. We knew that last week for the NOAA part. We also cleared with the Kodiak Soil and Water Conservation. I also finalized the lease with Alaska Fishing Game this week. And I success, well, I think it successfully raised their rent 2.5% a year over the next five years. They've just been having a very nominal increase in the past. We still have some work to do with that building. There are a lot of repairs that need to be done, but we are figuring out different ways. In the meeting Dave had with our architect this week, we talked about the need for a new roof and the need for new siding. But we also talked about what other things we could do instead of that big project that would give us some more time. This pool, we're still working on that with the vendor. As you know, we changed the dates for Peterson. The Norristore windows and siding is going very well, except they did not order the new hardware for the new doors they put in. So, this week they had to fasten the old hardware to the new doors. Beautiful doors, bad-looking hardware. New hardware is on its way. We're hoping to still be able to make that same end date because he wants them to be responsible for the replacement. So, we're still working towards that. We have made our trips out to Karlik and Larson Bay. We have all of the replacements parts on order. We'll need to make one more trip to both of those villages to get our part of the agreement for Larson Bay. Larson Bay has already taken that school and it is now Larson Bay's school. Karlik, well, we'll find out Monday if it becomes a school or not. But Karlik has taken on the utility cost for that facility as of July 1st. Okay. Moving on to finance, I already told you that Altman Rogers is here. IT was very helpful this week with the GIS analysis coming out and helping us with another one of those citizen concerns that has been ongoing for like the past three years and hasn't found resolution. We paid to have their property staked and then the GIS analysis went out and did all of their voodoo to get those stakes uploaded so we could see the actual property lines when we look at them by satellite. And we are working with community development and the assessor to figure out the fix there. And I already told you about Paul. In assessing, we are about 80% done with Service District 1, so great work to them. And community development, Chris actually got to have a meeting with Planning and Zoning Work Session and meet all the folks on that board. They do have a regular meeting coming up next week. They will be going over the CIP list at that meeting. So, that's going to be an important meeting for the community. And Chris has continued work and we're going to, we decided to go for that Pro Housing Grant, that HUG grant that we told you about last week. So, we've already met with, well, I told KDC about it. I told the City of Kodiak about it. Kodiak Island Housing Authority knows about it. And so, we're going to try to get as many letters as possible as we can because that's a very competitive grant in which there are only 20 and it's a federal grant, so 20 across the nation. So, it's going to have to be good. So, you'll see that on an upcoming agenda in October so that it can be turned in by the end of October to them.
Nice job, Amy. And I also appreciate you going through it. It lets the public hear what's going on. So, thank you very much for that. Next item is Kirk's comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the Assembly. The write-in candidacy period is still open and it will be open until a week before the election. So, anyone who's interested to run or anyone who wished to run for office may still do so by filling out the write-in candidacy forms that are available in the Clerk's Office and they are also available online. The election pamphlets were mailed out within the timeframe required by code. I'm hoping that you've all received your pamphlets. And so, you know that all the pamphlets were also, or the pamphlets were, and all the other election documents are all being translated into the Filipino language. And they have been, the pamphlet has been translated into the Filipino language. So, election is double the work. We have to do everything in the Filipino language. We have distributed copies of the Filipino pamphlet to the canneries and stores and places like that. So, if you need more, if, or if you know of anyone who wants a Filipino language, please let us know. Those are also available on the website and also on our social media page. I think there's a question.
James?
That's just Tagalog, not Ilukano, right?
No, the requirement is the Filipino language. So, we're not translating them into the other languages.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have also mailed out this week the 737 by-mail voting ballots to the villages, including Chinix. So, those should start showing up in the mail this week and next week. We have also hired absentee voting officials for the villages. So, just in case someone didn't get any, their ballots at the villages, they can go to an absentee voting official and still vote. Once again, I'd like to thank our election volunteers. We have held our training on Monday and Tuesday and we will be training our absentee voting officials tomorrow. Early voting starts on Monday, September 18th and it will go through Monday, October 2. Our early voting starts from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. in this room. So, during the, the time of 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., the campaign, campaign rules, prohibition rules exist. And so, no one should be parking their car outside here with a vote for so-and-so sign.
No political advertisement.
Yes. No campaigning during those times. You can, you can do that after 4:00 p.m., but not between 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. So, upcoming meetings, there's a Rural Leadership Forum that's scheduled on September 20th through the 22nd. I've listed some of the other projects that I'm working on and also the status of Assembly member request. There's information here. Those yellow forms, I'm tracking them. So, the next few months or the next few meetings, there's quite a bit of agenda items that are going to be coming up and they're pretty important. And I would like to, the Assembly, to please let me know if you are traveling because we need to make sure that there's going to be forums for this meeting. So, please let me know if you're going to be going out of town. And that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Scott?
Where is the rural farm you want to be at?
Is it at the Kodiak College?
At the big room?
Yeah, across from the library.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Next is mayor comments. I don't have any comments at this time. She went over the official travel calendar. So, Assemblymember, oh, the heck with them. Ryan?
Uh, let's see. Good thing we didn't limit this to five minutes. So, let's see, Amy, our solid waste contract, please, I know we've discussed this in the past. Please enable enough time for us to review the contract when we're pushing it out for Assembly review. I'd like to talk about the KFRC touch tank. There was a social media outcry about that closing down for the winter. I'd like for us to consider other alternatives to potentially look at staffing that. I have seen in the assessing department, there are still outstanding exemptions. I'd like to see those get moved faster into the queue so we can know what our potential liabilities are. Finally, I'd like to thank Paul Van Dyke. That's a pretty amazing career and so I think that that's pretty special. So, thank you, Mr. Van Dyke. I'd also like to echo Nova's comments with thanking the election workers. Every time I go there, everybody's always smiling. I would encourage the public to make more comments, to show up to these meetings when there are sensitive issues and let your voice be heard. And I heard something this week that resonated with me and I've heard it my whole life, being born and raised here in Kodiak. The statement of "it's only Kodiak" bothers me when it comes to health and safety, it comes to environmental concerns. Just because we don't have a high regulatory presence here, the, the statement of "it's only Kodiak" really doesn't sit well with me. And so, Kodiak matters. Kodiak safety matters. Kodiak environmental matters. And yeah, I would just encourage people to take a little more pride in their community. So, that's it. Nine minutes, thanks.
Scott?
No comments.
Larry?
I want to say that I have a lot of pride in my community. I don't know who is responsible, but whenever we have a large dumpster and you have to go through potholes that are a foot deep to get to it, who is responsible like for the one at Bayside Fire, you know, in their training area? It is horrible and it's been horrible forever.
Nope. Borough facilities.
But somebody probably needs to take responsibility. I suspect Service District 1 ends at the entrance to it.
Right.
I brought it up because, but it's, it's not really a complaint. It's just, it's really hard to get in there, you know, without bottoming out when you have a truck. And so, it might be good for somebody to schedule some of those. I don't know the condition of the other dumpster locations. But if we're going to demand a lot of people in their etiquette in how they dump things, we should have a safe way to get to them on a regular basis. The other thing I wanted to say is that I really appreciate our new manager. I like your reports, I like your diligence to details and I like your leadership. And I feel very, very good that you're here working with us.
Thank you, Larry. Yeah, just for clarification, Service District has Parkside Road to the entrance there and then it's on there. Well, too bad. I'm taking it. You raised a question. It is the Facilities Department, so that's who takes care of it. So, I hope that clarifies things thoroughly for you, Larry. Thank you. Jared?
Uh, thanks, Amy and the staff and Nova for, for a long one tonight. And thanks to our election workers, candidate forums, the city, Monday, May 25th, and the Borough and School Board on Wednesday, May, September 25th and Wednesday, September 27th for Borough and School Board. So, tune in.
Joe?
Um, a couple of things. I thank all the same people that Mr. Griffith did and the rest of you guys. Staff does an amazing job. I think I've been saying this since I've been here. I appreciate the staff that don't show up in this room that help us because it makes us look smart. Today, I went and picked up my wife and brought her home from work and I was driving on Salif. She just got done having a surgery and so she can't drive and we have to drive slow. As I went over the speed bump, this white truck came behind me and passed me right at the speed bump. The man purports to be a minister. I have yet to see evidence of that and especially the way that he drove tonight. But this is actually the fourth time I have been passed on Salif. Also, the dumpster on that area, I, I just don't like seeing how much stuff that people put on the sides of the dumpsters. They don't want to take it out to, to the landfill. And much of the stuff is cardboard and it could be put into the recycle places. I think that people don't realize that the overtime and the extra people, manpower that it takes to pick up these big, heavy things out of the dumpsters and next to the dumpsters, it raises the cost for us all and I will hope there's a way that we can fix that. I think that's enough tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. James?
No further comments. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, during the work session... With that, during the work session at 9:37. Good night, everyone.
Technically, I don't think you adjourned the work session. I think we just ended.
I can do it any way I want.
I love it when you do that.
I try and do.